Thank you so much for your patience. We're calling the meeting back to order. The time is 6:01 PM. All right, if everybody would stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm gonna call the roll. District one, Ms. Jasmine Bowles, she's absent this evening. District two, Mr. Mark Christmas.
Present.
District three, Dr. Jesse Goree.
Present.
District four, Ms. Victoria Williams, she's out, she's recovering, so make sure we keep her in our prayers. District five, Dr. Dee Haney. District six, Ms. Mary Baker. District seven, Ms. Sabrina Hill. District eight, Ms. Joy Tellis Cooper. And district nine, myself, Ben Straker, I'm here.
I'm present too.
Hold on one second. I wasn't finished calling the roll, I just realized that I was missing something. The ethics statement, could you get the ethics statement? Thanks. All right, and finishing calling up the roll. Superintendent, Dr. Anthony Smith.
Present.
Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Douglas Hendricks. Board Liaison, Ms. Kim Blackwood. Assistant to the suit, Alicia Bader. Assistant to the deputy suit, Ms. Dawn Biles, keep her in your prayers also, I don't think she's here today. Attorney Clem Doyle. And we're joined here by our interns, Adrian Franquez, thank you, and Kingston Parry. Is there anybody I missed on the roll call? All right, reading the ethics statement. In accordance with board policy BH, it is the duty of every board member to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of such conflicts. Does any board member have any known conflict of interest or appearance of such conflict with respect to any matter scheduled to come before the board at this meeting or appearing on our proposed agenda? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict and refrain from participation in the matter involved. I think we have some recommendations from the executive session. Mister Superintendent, the platform is yours. I put a check there. I need a motion, I need a motion to adopt the agenda that we're gonna have tonight. Ms. Goree and Ms. Baker, the motion has been made and properly seconded, can I get a vote? Good deal. Superintendent, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, Ms. Vice Chairwoman, members of the board, staff and community. I would like the board to consider for the position of principal for the Early Learning Center, Ms. Anika Bryant.
Do I have a motion, Ms. Goree?
Yes, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation of Ms. Anika Bryant as the principal of the Early Learning Center.
Ms. Baker?
I second.
The motion has been made and properly seconded, can I get a vote? Thank you, board. Christmas, are you voting? Yeah, but unanimous. All right, okay, thank you so much, members of the board. Is Ms. Bryant available? Please come down and take a picture with the board. Anthony, congratulations. I have no further recommendations, Mister Chairman. Oh, other than...
All right, everyone, if you look right ahead, right here on three, one, two, and three, stay there, one more, one, two, and... Thank y'all.
Those are my personnel recommendations, I would like the board to consider the findings of a tribunal hearing, tribunal hearing number 2025-2026-03.
Okay. Ms. Goree?
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for employee tribunal hearing 2025-2026-03.
Okay, the motion has been made by Ms. Goree and seconded by Mr. Mark Christmas, can I get a vote? It's unanimous. Thank you, board members. Okay, at this time, we're gonna have board member updates, I'm gonna start with you, Mister Christmas.
I'll end it this time.
Okay, Ms. Goree?
Good evening, everyone. I want to, I don't, I really hadn't been doing much in the district, but since it's a time of Thanksgiving, yes, I decided after eighteen years to miss a retreat and a couple of board meetings, something that I rarely do, but I want everybody to take this time as we go into Thanksgiving and then December's coming, as we go into the holidays, to make sure that you are very thankful for all of the blessings that you have. As you know, during this time, so many of our people in this country have been living without paychecks. We have people that are worried about their healthcare, about the next meal that's going to be on the table. So be thankful for your blessings, but also take care of you. Do you and make sure there's nobody more important than you. And as I'm gonna say in particular, I guess I'm gonna be a little sexist here, but I know with women, we have such responsibilities, taking care of family and everybody else, look at him looking at me. But take care of yourself. And I'm hoping, I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, a happy holiday season. And I'm going to pass the mic, and I do wanna say, since our colleague is not here, Ms. Williams, Ms. Williams just had a procedure, and if you all would keep her in your prayers, and I just remembered one other person too, in our finance department. I would like for us to take a moment of silence and keep Calvin Browning in your prayers. He lost his son. And so, it's, you know, it's always bad at this time of the year to lose somebody, but let's take a moment for his, him and his family, please. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Goree. I just have three things. We had a magnificent jazz session at Ms. Jerry's Restaurant this past Saturday night. The Morrow Jazz Band actually performed, and thanks to Ms. Victoria Williams and her husband, who was instrumental in this, Mr. Raymond Williams, we collected some donations for the Jazz Band. It's very important that everybody knows that the Jazz Band has been chosen to go to Carnegie Hall in New York come next April. The bill for that is gonna be close to $100,000. When I say $100,000, it's fifty different individuals, fifty different children that are gonna be attending this, and they're required to pay $2,500 apiece for the, for the trip. We're gonna be doing some aggressive fundraising to lower that cost for them, so be on the lookout for some major fundraisers that we're gonna try to do to put a dent in that $100,000. Also, we're gonna be honoring the Communications Department for the recognition and awards that they've gotten this past year. And that's a luncheon that we're putting on this coming Wednesday, right? Wednesday from 12 to 2? Right, from 12 to 2, we're gonna be having a luncheon so that we can recognize them and, you know, give them their flowers for all of the great work that they've, they've been doing. If you could give them a hand. Lastly, I wanna wish the community and everyone here a happy Thanksgiving, and as my colleague said, really truly try to work on your mental health. Ms. Baker?
Okay, I got a lot, but I'll try to make it quick. First of all, I wanna give a shout out to Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Jonas Slade, who spoke for the veterans at our veteran celebration. If you haven't seen it, I suggest that you find a copy of it because he's gonna be our future president of the United States, I swear. And I shook his hand and gave him hugs, I'd be the first one to congratulate him on that one, but he was amazing. Next, little quick thing, shout out to Felicia Brown because she added doctor to her title, so. She probably didn't want me to tell you that, but I did. Tomorrow night at 6 o'clock, it's a different situation, it's gonna be a gun forum. And along with the district attorney and our chiefs, we will be giving out gun locks and information, so I ask any of you to come out if you need a gun lock. If you don't know somebody who does, I am not the person to take away your rights to own a gun, but I expect you to be responsible because I don't wanna pray for any more lost babies. So, those are the, probably the quickest ones. Next, we're celebrating National, Native American Month this month, along with Veterans Day. So I'm gonna give you some quick facts, and you'll know why it's important to teach history. During World War I, over 12,000 Native Americans served, including the Choctaw Co. Talkers. Of those 12,6500 were drafted. Now you say, why is that important? A lot of draft. Native Americans were not given citizenship until 1924, a little bit after the war. World War II, 44,000 were enlisted, the highest rate of volunteers in any demographic group. And they included the Navajo Co. Talkers, Marine Ira Hayes, who helped raise the flag at Iwo Jima, along with 65,000 who served in the defense industry. And again, why is that so important? Because they didn't have the right to vote until 1948. Korea had over 10,000 who served. Vietnam, 42,000, with one out of every four eligible Native Americans serving versus one out of 12 of non-Native people, and 90% of them volunteered. Currently, there's over 30,000 Native Americans serving worldwide for our nation. And again, going back to those voting. Native, I saw something not too long ago, in the last major election, Navajo people had to go 160 miles to get to their closest polling place to vote. So when we talk about voter suppression, let's be honest where it's at. So that's just my little soapbox. And again, I hope we take a little bit of time to actually teach our children all of our history. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Dr. Haney?
Good evening, everyone. I had the opportunity to sit in at the Clayton County Delegation Forum, the community forum that they had, and just listening to the community, how they're voicing their concerns, not only with the education part of our district, our county that is, but just the overall scope of the county in itself. And then they even asked me to come up and speak, and I just advocated for those in the special education room, and I advocated and pleaded with them that we need money, we need funding for that. Considering the vacancies that we have, 28 vacancies in that space. And so I advocated for that, along with other needs that we have in the district to support us, and not just be a knocking sound, but to actually be about some action as of helping us to be able to help our future, our present and right now. So that was a great experience for that. Some of the constituents within different districts came up to ask questions and even provided suggestions. And of course, I let them over to their board members out of respect for that, as well as, you know, always informing our superintendent of what I spoke on so that he wouldn't be called an aha, and to make sure that we're all in sync to what we're asking and requesting. So that's what District Five has been doing out there, just advocating for the needs of our students and various departments. And also, it's good to know, and I'll just bring this up later when the finance department comes up. So again, thank you for the opportunity.
Ms. Hill?
Good evening, everyone. I just wanna say thank you to our Clayton County staff, support services, in collaboration with our stakeholders, New Vision, Christian Church, Hearts for Nurse Hope, United Way, Cross Culture 365, Melanated Pearls, Area Needs, Atlanta Food Bank, Community Service Authority, Georgia Appleseed and Housing Plus Inc., and many of our faith-based organizations, and coming together for our food care package that will take place on November 20th at Forest Park High School from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. We still need volunteers, and we would love to have you join us at that time. We do have an opportunity to do donations, I know times are tight for all of us, but any dollar amount will help. I saw a couple of our community people donate $10, $25, and grassroots is how we get to where we need to be. So I just wanna say, in the spirit of Thanksgiving, I thank God for each and every one of your staff members and all of us working together to serve our community with excellence and love. So thank you.
Ms. Tellis Cooper?
Thank you. So no new updates for me, but I do wanna just let everyone know to have a happy Thanksgiving. And I think we missed one of our board members' birthdays, Ms. Dee Haney, so if we could just wish her a happy birthday. Belated birthday.
Dr. Smith, your update before you start, the superintendent.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. At this time, I'll pass it on to Dr. Delphia Young. I will give us an update about the federally identified schools, okay?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairperson, Straker, Chairwoman Baker, board members, our Superintendent Smith, our audience, and our community. Okay, thank you, sorry for the delay. So what we wanna do is, hold on a minute, wrong way. What we wanna do is share with you a presentation about our identified schools. This is a mandatory presentation. You have the full slides, set of slides, but we're only gonna highlight a very few number of slides. And so I'm gonna get Ms. Jackie Johnson, she is going to share with you the information for tonight. Just be mindful, we will come back, I believe, next month, and we will have a deeper conversation about the CCRPI. And if you have any questions from tonight, we'd be glad to answer those, you know, on that next time.
Right, it'll be in January.
Oh, January, okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Dr. Young. Good evening, board, chair, vice chair, rest of the board, community members at large, I appreciate the opportunity. So what we have on this slide are the current state identified and federally identified schools. They were identified as of January. You see Perry Center for Graduation Rates and for Content Mastery, and the ATSI schools are Hawthorne, Huey, Riverdale, all for students with disabilities and content mastery. We have TSI schools that are listed there. Most of those schools are all identified for the same reasons, for students with disabilities, content mastery, and then Lee Street Elementary has the added group of students, of our black students who are also identified. This slide shows you what the overall scores are for the federally identified schools, their trends from 2023 through 2025. And I'll just highlight the highest scores of this subset of schools. For content mastery, North Clayton had 58.6, Rivers Edge 56, Haney had 48.3, Hawthorne 47.9. For progress, the highest schools, the highest scores for these schools are Haney at 91.9, Hawthorne at 88.1, Riverdale at 88, King 87.2. For closing the gap, the highest scores were found at Huey and King at 100, Rivers Edge at 88.5, Edmonds at 88.2. For readiness, the highest scores were for Rivers Edge at 80.8, Hawthorne at 78.6, Haney at 75.6, and Huey at 74.5. Several of the schools had increases in all of those areas, and you can see that on the slides there. So that you are aware, the next determination for federally identified schools for CSI and for ATSI will be in January of 2027, is when we'll get a new updated list for those schools. And for TSI, we will like, we will get a new updated list for TSI school in January of 2026. This slide is showing the high school graduation rates for North Clayton and for Perry. And based on these results, it is very likely that North Clayton will come off the list based on their improvement. And Perry will come off the list for their graduation rates, however, they will likely remain on the list for their content mastery. The schools that showed the greatest improvements are listed here on this slide, I won't read all of them to you. And then the schools that had decreases, those that showed improvement in each of the areas, and also those that showed decreases in each of the areas, and those that are unchanged are on the slide. And you did receive the presentation that has all the current data as far as how these schools performed last year fall compared to this year fall on the MAP data, which is how we are addressing the needs and ensuring that the schools are moving and growing throughout the course of this year. So I will end with that and ask if you have any questions.
Board members, any questions? Ms. Hill?
Yes, thank you so much for this information. However, I just need us to, I need clarification. When I'm looking at this data, I'm asking myself, okay, what does this really mean? What are we saying? So in layman's terms, what are we saying here with this data? Are we saying that our students are not performing as they should be? Please, just to help me
Sure.
understand what I'm looking at, because when we say that they're on the list, that's, is that good or bad?
So federally identified schools get identified, in short, because of low performance.
Okay.
All the schools in the state of Georgia are ranked, and whether they're an elementary school, middle school or high school, they're ranked in order of their scores from lowest to highest performing, and the bottom percentage of schools that are performing, not performing as high are all then going through a filter that determines if they're gonna continue to be identified further. And I believe you're gonna get a more updated, a longer presentation that goes through each of those, how they're identified, each of those areas going forward. This, the data that you see on the slide there, you'll see the scores there, all the scores are out of 0 to 100. So 100 in each of the, on each of those components, whether it's content mastery, progress, closing the gaps, readiness, or graduation rates, are scores out of 100. So the scores that you see there show what score the students, those schools are at, based on a score out of 100.
Okay, so when I'm looking at these scores, I'm looking at 100. So that's 100 across the board that they've done well?
Out of 100, so for example, that first group, excuse me, that first group of content mastery, when you look at that 2025, that score for each of those schools is out of 100 in that area of content mastery. Content mastery, in short, is achievement.
Correct.
That next column of growth, excuse me, of progress is pretty much growth. And again, how much they grew in comparison of what they were expected to grow, based on each student's percentiles of growth, again, the schools are all scored out of 100. It's a lot of calculations that go under, behind the scenes with that of how the state calculates that. But each of those scores are out of 100 as well. And closing the gaps is based out of 100, and it's based on the subgroups of students or the student groups, each of the identified groups of students who are underneath the surface of the data. All their scores are all tallied in there, and then the scores are calculated out of 100.
Okay, so when we say that they're on here for mastery content, that means that there's a lot of work to do?
There's a lot of work to do in achievement, yes.
Okay.
You can see where we are making the gains, though, when you look at progress.
And so in your, in your experience, I'm looking at this data and the number of schools that's on this list, and I know this would go to our leaders, and how we would go about approaching this, or is this something that is ongoing? Or where are we at with that, Dr. Young?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
Well, you know, because you've been working with me a long time.
Absolutely. So let's, 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 I don't, the content mastery, when we look at this for the state department, because this is for everybody to know, if a state has a formula or more of a process for identifying students who are schools that are not performing at what their expected performance to be. Every school in the state of Georgia has its own expectations. And so these expectations determine quite a bit of what's going on here. Now, in terms of content mastery, everything that we're being putting in place to support content mastery, such as starting with our H1 literacy, our focus on interventions and preventions, our instructional coaches, all of those things have, are in place to support us, our professional development for our teachers and our leaders, our community, bringing them together and giving them training. Everything that we try to do has been very systematic and methodical to move these numbers along. And so if you look at your data across, you can see in many cases how we have improved for most of those schools from 2023 to 2025. And this is what the state asks for, they ask for that incremental improvement, incremental improvement. And however, like when you see the closing of the gaps, we have some areas that we have to work on in that area, and closing of the gap is not looking at just did the kid pass the test or not, that looks at how the score that the student made in comparison to his or her academic peers, and that's a group comparison, okay? And the more we do for raising our student performance on the Georgia Milestone or GAA, Georgia Alternative Assessment, or the access, the higher those closing the gaps scores would be. And so I want you, it's kinda thinking about this through the process, there are multiple pieces that go into this, but I really wanna be able to share that in detail in January.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Young, when we talk about closing the gap, that percentage jump has to be 6% or more, right? Am I correct?
For closing the gap?
Yeah.
No, no, sir.
Okay, it's just, just show some type of progression.
Three percentage points.
Three, okay.
Three percentage points, right. But again, it's based on the individual schools, okay?
Gotcha.
And individual subgroups of students. And individual subgroups of students.
Gotcha.
All right.
Go for it.
Dr. Young, thank you for explaining that once again. But I'm concerned when I see this and I saw constant, like one of the schools in my district, constant decreases overall closing the gap, and you're saying this is by group comparisons and all this. Can you explain a little bit more on that?
Which?
When I see decreases overall, I saw one says decreases in content mastery. I saw overall, and I saw decrease overall in closing the gaps. And I'm looking at one, I'm just like, explain that to me.
So in looking at decreases across multiple areas are attributed to many things. The first piece, content mastery. That means that the students did not perform as well on the assessments as they should or need to based on the target outlined by, for, for progress, based on developing proficient and distinguished learners. And so that's the first thing, that's performance, peer performance. How'd you do on the test? That's content mastery, okay? So if students have declines in that, then you're going to have declines in that content mastery. Now, we look at progress. Progress is also the Georgia Milestone, but that now look at the scale score. That's looking at your individual student compared to his group, her group. If you have low performance on the developing proficient and distinguished, you're going to have low performance with progress. See where I'm going with this? Okay, closing the gap is looking at that they meet their targets. Well, if you didn't have good closing, content mastery performance, you're not going to have good performance on, on closing the gaps. So you can see the through line is academic achievement on the Georgia Milestone. Now readiness is a whole different set of measures and a little bit of academic achievement.
I just want to say, despite what the numbers say, I want to thank everybody for all their hard work. I think we're moving in the right direction. I'm personally tired of hearing the word milestones. I'm tired, I were interested in its numbers. And I know for a fact that we're moving in the right direction because, what, two or three years ago, we had most of our schools off of a list. And now, now they're on the list because the reality is this, those people that work downtown, they need a job. So they just go sit up and think about something new, some new scale that we can come up with and put children on. We know that children throughout the state aren't equal. They don't have the same environment everywhere. There are so many factors that play into this. The only, my only really concern about what I'm looking at is mainly, it seems like most people ended up on the list because of
Student with
Student with special needs or whatever. And we know that in order for us to get them off the list, when it comes to hiring employees next year, maybe we need, this board needs to look at paying more money for teachers in that area so that we can help our students. And I'm tired, I'm gonna just say this. Interestingly enough, last year with our interns, one was the salutatorian, one graduated sixth in the class, the other one was in the top 10%. We were talking about temperature, body temperature. I asked them a very simple question. I asked them, what, what, what is your body temperature? Neither three of them could tell me that answer because guess what? We don't even teach that if that's not a skill on the milestones. And I just really think with all of this that comes from the state, that we're still sending children out not with the, with the, I had a great education because we learned so many things. But I'm proud of the progress that we're making, particularly when we look at the Perry Center and see the gains that they're making, that to me is, we're, we're making the gains that we need to make. And I just thank everybody for all the hard work, all the professional development that the teachers get because I think we're over PDing them because they're, they can't even, they learn one thing and then, you know, you got to turn around. Because it, it all just boils down to test scores. And that don't mean, that means nothing to me.
Ms. Corey, thank you for that injection of comments. And when we do this overall CCRPI update in January, I think the board will have a clear understanding of the actual progress that we're making overall.
Dr. Young, I'm sorry, Ms. Chair, Dr. Young, how, how long does the state give us to come off this list?
Good question. So CSI and ATS I, we have three years to show progress. So Ms. Johnson and I, I don't know, one day last week, we were running some numbers and we see that many of our schools, if we were using the 2023 criteria, many of these schools would not meet that criteria, but no longer meet that criteria here. So we have to this school year, when we get the results, these data points will be compared to the 2024 data points. And the rule is, is for them to show improvement from the time they were identified until the next reidentification process. And so we can see those improvements in our content mastery. And as the schools go through the filter, we see that progress, closing the gaps, and readiness are, are there. And many of our schools would not go through the filter because of their success in those other areas there. And so we're very excited about that, that most of these schools will more likely, if they show the continued progress, will not meet the eligibility requirement for January 2027.
And I will say that I bet as soon as they see too many of ours coming off of this, they'll come up with something else. Just to put them back on there because they, basically all of our, the metro, metro area districts are out, we're all looking like we're not doing a good job, and I know that we are.
All right, any more questions? Seeing none, go for it.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, team. Ms. Bivens.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Member, Superintendent Dr. Smith. Colleagues and community, this evening. So while she's pulling this up, this evening, we're gonna, our FY24 audit has been completed. It's completed, possibly in the September. So this will call up, so we're just ready, getting ready to start the FY25 audit. Do you know when I started in March of '23, we were behind two years on our audit. We finished '21 in March, what if I got here, '22, a year later. Then we did '23 and '24 within a year. So we're caught up. This evening, our auditor is here to give you update on the findings. We did have four findings, they were repeat findings from '23. And we had eight last year, prior to that, I think we had 11. So we've gotten those started, getting those down. So hopefully, fingers crossed, friends, that with '25, we have zero, or at least get rid of half of those again. If we can, don't have any more repeat findings, that will lead us to getting off of the high-risk list because the repeat, repeat findings is what causes us to get on that list. The one thing that's not on the list that was my grave concern, and I'm sure many others as well, was one of our findings for the last few years was reconciling cash. That one is gone. So I'm excited about that one because that's the one that gave me the most heartburn and kept me up at night, even though I know the cash is fine, just because it wasn't being reconciled like it was supposed to. That was a concern for mine, but that one has been taken care of. So Meredith Lipsen with Malden and Jenkins is going to give you an update for that here. And you also have a copy of it in front of you, and I sent it to you. I sent you the audit earlier, uh, last week, and I thought the summary that the auditors, management, our auditor's discussion and analysis was included in that, but it was not. So I sent it about 6:30 this morning, but I also think they are happy that this is what she's going to speak to this, this evening.
Good evening. Again, my name is Meredith Lipsen with Malden and Jenkins CPA firm, and I am the Partner in Charge of Clayton County Board of Education's annual audit. As Ramona indicated, we did complete the June 30, 2024 audit back in September, filed with the state. And again, as you mentioned, we are, they're in preparation for the 2025 audit, which we hope will get to soon and, and be caught up. However, as I mentioned to Ramona, there's very few school districts, and we do audit a lot of them, that have actually completed their 2025 audit. So y'all really are, and that's what's called up. The document that I believe you all have been provided a copy of and that's up here on the screen is what we refer to as our auditor's discussion and analysis. There's a good bit of information, just kind of a summary of the overall audit process, our opinions, financial statements, and findings and recommendations. I won't, certainly won't go through this page by page, but it is there for you all. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to stop me. Or if you think of anything afterwards, please, please feel free to contact me and we can discuss further. It's going to be kind of hard to see on the screen because this is just a PDF file. A little bit of information about our firm and the first couple of pages of the document. One of the most important things to talk about is our audit opinion. We did issue an unmodified, a clean opinion on the majority of the statements, the governmental activities, your business-type activities, and your major funds. We did issue a qualified opinion on the School Nutrition Fund simply because the School Nutrition Inventory at year end, for June 30, 2024, we were able to reconcile it to a detailed listing of the inventory and procedures were comfortable with that. However, the fiscal year '23 inventory, which is basically the beginning of fiscal year '24, we were not able to reconcile. And so because the activity between the year flows through fiscal year '24, we could not issue a unmodified opinion for the School Nutrition Fund. However, we, the issue with that and with the software has been, has been rectified, and we don't anticipate there being any issue for '25 in issuing an unmodified, clean opinion. But as always, the financial statements are the responsibility of management, our responsibilities to express an opinion based on audit procedures. And again, we did issue an unmodified opinion on the majority of the financial statements, just a qualified opinion on the School Nutrition Fund. I'm about blind, so I'm just trying to see what this frame. So just a few highlights as far as the financial statements go. When you look at the governmental-wide financial statements of the district, you all had net position at June 30, 2024 of approximately $420 million. Net position is the difference between your assets and liability, or basically your equity. The majority of the liabilities that you all, that are reflected on the school district's statement of net position or balance sheet are net pension and OPEB liabilities. Those total up to approximately $819 million. You all are no different than any other school district. Those are very large numbers for all the school districts. There's certainly not current liabilities, there's projection of the future, but those are very heavy liabilities, and that really is the majority of the liabilities that the school district has on their, on their books. This year, you all, as far as the government-wide, all of your, your funds together, had a decrease in net position of approximately $11 million. There was an excess of expenditures over revenues, expenses over revenues. A good deal of that has to do with, I believe you all, salaries were higher than you all had anticipated and budgeted for. But you all do have a strong net position, so that $11 million decrease did not do anything to really affect the district overall as far as their equity. We do have a couple of charts within this document that show your general fund revenues and expenditures. General fund includes all those operations that are not funded by, by specific funding sources. So your Title I or your Title II, those are special revenue funds. Those are not accounted for in your general fund. Your general fund is pretty much everything else. You all did have total expenditures of approximately $352.9 million, which was over budget, the budget was about $318 million. Your total revenues, that number. Well, yeah. Fund balance, your difference between your revenues and your expenditures was approximately, a decrease of approximately $10.3 million. Your fund balance of the general fund was approximately $168.5 million. So your general fund of $168.5 million, and when you look at that as compared to your monthly expenditures, that's about three and a half months' worth of expenditures that you had on hand at June 30, '24 that carried you through, you all started getting those big dollar amounts of your taxes and so forth that come in, in the fall of each year. So good, strong fund balance at June 30, 2024. The next few pages that are in this document cover the footnotes to the financial statements, and those are very similar to those that we've had in the past. There's really been no significant changes. And we also issued two compliance reports. One is on government auditing standards, and the other is your single audit report. Because you all do expend in excess of $750,000 in federal funds, you're required each year to undergo a single audit. It's done on a risk-based approach, and there's certain programs every year that we test for compliance in internal controls. And so that was, of course, done again this year. As part of our audit process, there are certain things that we're required to communicate to you all under the standards that guide us, and those are also included in this document. And those are on pages 11 through 13 of this document. Just making sure that you all understand about, you know, the county policies and procedures that you all ultimately, management has the responsibility for those. There's certain judgments and estimates that are used as part of the overall audit process, and we do look at those, make sure that they are, that we are comfortable with those in the realm of the audit procedures. We did, we had no difficulties working with management. As a matter of fact, they worked extremely hard to get us everything that we needed so that we could get this report issued. We did request representation from management, and all of the information had been provided to us, and we received that representation without any issues. There were certain audit adjustments that were made to the trial balances that were provided to us at the beginning of the audit. A detailed, those adjustments, we can, can certainly be provided to you, but they do have those in the finance department. All those adjustments have been posted to the general ledger so that their books agree with the audited financial statements. On page 14 is where you'll see the findings and recommendations as part of the audit process, which Ramona had, which Ramona had mentioned previously. We did have four findings, and these were all repeat findings. All of them are being worked on, I know. Certainly don't expect to have, yeah, I do not expect that any of these actually would be repeat findings for 2025. They related to really reporting of brief receivables and revenues related to grant funding, accounts payable and retainage payable, making sure that all subsequent disbursements for, for goods and services that were received prior to year-end were reported as such. And depreciation expense being reported, that was another, one of the findings. And then inter-fund balances, we've had issues with for a number of years. If funds are moved to and from, to funds, between funds, they have to balance out. And so like I said, I do know that the finance department is working on these diligently, and I really am not anticipating having these as repeat findings for '25.
Ms. Chair? Yes. Yes, ma'am. Question? Sir. You said these were repeat findings, right?
Correct.
For 2024, 2025?
For, for 2023, 2024.
And then 2023, 2024?
Correct.
Was there repeat findings for 2021, '22? I mean, because when you, when you say repeat findings, how many times has it repeated itself before we fixed it?
It has repeated itself, I'd say, four or five years at least.
I understand, but it's been a four-year process.
Yes, sir.
Before, before we, we finally catching up with it, that's what you're telling me?
That is correct. Primarily due to, there was an enormous amount of turnover in that finance department as well as issues with the financial software.
So if I'm clear, you said that this shouldn't happen next year?
That is correct.
You, you guaranteeing that?
No, I'm not. I can't guarantee anything.
Well, I'm just, I'm curious if we did it for four years. I understand it was another administration, but this administration been here long enough. I understand what you're saying. This administration been here long enough to catch it now. And I appreciate them catching it. But we shouldn't continue to have repeat anything when it comes to finances.
So, Mr. Christmas?
Yes.
With all due respect, do you remember, remember I said when I came in in 2023?
First, don't say all due respect, because when you say that, it ain't gonna be respectful.
Yes, it is. So when I came in, we were behind already in two years, right? So any findings that you have when you're behind, you don't have an opportunity to go back and fix them. This '23, '25 is really gonna be the first year of this last fiscal year that my team and I will have to address all of these findings that we've had, the '21 audit, '22 audit, '23 audit, and even '24 audit. Because remember, I came in at the end of fiscal year 2023.
Correct.
So I've only been here for two and a half years in all fairness. And the '25 audit, which is coming up, is gonna be the first year that we had a full year with, to get everything corrected.
Once, thank you, Ms. Vivins, I appreciate it. I'm gonna ask you the same question. So I shouldn't see this again?
It's our expectation that we won't have this next year. I had some things in place. We had some people come in. Again, as I stated, we started out with 11 findings on the '21 audit and we've gotten down to four. It is our expectation and anticipation that we don't have that. And I'm holding Gene because this is his, he's taking care of that. No, no, I'm responsible, so no, that's only.
All right.
I just mess with Gene. But no, sir, it is our anticipation that we don't have this. And my expectation, I've already expressed it to staff. We already have things in place, so these things can be taken care of.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
In addition to the findings, we have also some management recommendations. Management recommendations are just those items that we think, if addressed by management, would benefit, the finance department would benefit, the financial reporting process. And again, but they're just recommendations, they're not findings. There's a number of these on pages 16, 16 through 18, just relating to some of the bank accounts. And they're very small with very little in them, they're kind of almost dormant. Looking into those. A lot of them relate to, to school discretionary bank accounts and pooled cash. Again, not findings, just recommendations as far as the process and procedures gap. And we also.
I have a question, please, and this might be more so from Ms. Vivins. At the bottom of page 16, you have something about three bank accounts. And one of them mentions the employee of the year and it has a balance. But now I'm wondering, is that really money from us? Or is that maybe some foundation money that might be intermingled? Or do we have a fund for that? I thought someone else was maybe picking up the tab because I think I see something in one of our reports to that effect.
So it is on our books, but what I found was a checking account that where they had collected money for the employee of the year. And because Ms. Rice has taken over, it needs to be transferred to her. It was over professional learning. So we got all the information and transferred that to Ms. Rice's department. Those accounts were not being reconciled because I was not aware that they were there. But when we discovered them, we added them to where they need to be from a financial perspective where we could monitor those accounts. And that's why they're on our books now. And later on, you're gonna see a budget amendment for this year where they had gotten some money to offset the expenses for that. That's why, because we now put it on our books and we have to account for that. And that account had just been sitting there. And once it was discovered, because when she told me about them, I didn't know. We had a student, a teacher of the year account. And so we did some digging and some research. And that's when we found out it had been housed over professional learning, when they were responsible for it, had just been sitting there, accounts had not been reconciled. We got the checks, all the, everything, and transferred that to Ms. Rice, got it all reconciled and everything. And so we are now monitoring that and maintaining that, keeping up with that information.
Okay, but, but those accounts, they're, I mean, they're not negative accounts, it's just money?
No, they weren't included on the books initially, but they are, for '25, they are.
Okay, yeah, because I noticed we have, maybe, is that the information in this meeting? I know I read it somewhere.
Yes, it's a budget amendment that we'll talk about.
Oh, right, okay.
So, Ms. Vivins, since you found the money and you put it in the proper's account, did you close these accounts?
No, no, the account is still open. Ms. Rice actually has access to it. We changed the signature authority on it where she now signs. She has that checking account and she can put the money in that account and write the checks. But we, it still has to come through us as far as the accounting for it and the records. It still gets audited, it would get audited in '25, just like it did last year. It didn't have any activity in it. It was an account sitting there.
What about those two other accounts that we?
Those two accounts, we're trying to figure out what to do with them. One of them was sputted tan, which happened way back when, when you all got a tan for sputted. So there's still some money left there. So we're trying to figure out what legally we can do with that money. And the other one, I don't remember what the other.
The clearing account.
Oh, a clearing account for school accounts. I think they're working on that one as well, because that has to do with the school accounts where we transfer money back and forth for the schools.
But you will give us a finding when you get this reconciled?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there questions about any of the other recommendations on pages 16 through 18?
Good, Ms. Hill.
Mr. Chair, I don't have a question. I would just like to bring a motion to the floor and ask for forensic audit to move the board and authorize an independent forensic audit over our finances just because of, as my colleague, Mr. Christmas, have highlighted, just in Ms. Vivins have inherited it, a lot of things. I would like us to have a forensic audit for '23, '24, '25 in light of us also having to have a tan this, this time coming in. So I just want us to continue to be fiscally responsible. I think our finance department and business services have done an amazing job based on what she said, she indicated she's only been here two years. But I think that we should always allow ourselves to have a clean look at what our financials look like. And so I would like a comprehensive assessment of all our financial practices and how our records look for transparency and to strengthen our fiscal responsibilities and accountability for the board. And I would like to bring a motion to the floor for that request.
Can I get a second, Ms. Cooper? The motion has been made and properly seconded. Can I get a vote?
Can we have some discussion? Okay, so I am, we keep talking about this tan and that is kind of working my nerves. I believe that there's an article in the paper today about Fayette County not being able to pay their employees. And I don't understand when people don't understand why we even talk about a tan that we might not even have to get. We need to pay our bills. And the auditor just mentioned the fact about our fund balance, which is what we've been operating off of since this summer. So the reason we even talk about getting a tan is because I know you get a tax bill. Everybody around this table received the tax bill and it came late. So when you're, when the tax bill comes late, that means the money that we're supposed to have is going to come late. So the question is, if there are people that don't want a tan, then it means you don't want to pay your employees and you don't want to pay yourself because you, you must have operating money, which that would get us in more trouble than anything else. We have, we have one school district right now that the state is having to give them money because of some things that they had, they didn't do correctly. But I'm gonna say this, I don't know how the votes gonna go. I'm not, I think when you talk about a forensic audit, I think you need to get more information on even how much it costs and what a forensic audit is. Because a forensic audit is not just something general you can say. You, you need to specify exactly what it is that you're looking for. And so I'm totally opposed to that. So I don't, I don't care what the rest of the board does. If, I mean, maybe we might need to do something. But I think before we come up with that as a solution, we need to get a little bit more information.
And, Mr. Chair, my recommendation, if it was the past, is that we do a RFP, get with our finance department and allow them to work with us on getting an audit. Yes, I am very familiar with a tan and I understand why we get them. I'm not opposed to us making sure that we can pay our bills. I am very aware of it. What I am asking for is for clarity on how our finances are going forward. I'm not looking at the past, I'm looking at the future. Public education is really in a different place. We need to prepare for what that looks like. And the only way you can do that is not live off of your savings account, but have a solid plan as to how we go forward, that we can keep all of our employees and that we can understand what it looks like financially. So I'm not doing this based on a tan. We're here, this is happening now. I understand that. And I also understand that people have to live. And this is why I said we need to know where we stand financially going towards the future. Because a lot of things are uncertain with public education. And I believe in making sure I understand where we stand financially now. Since I've been on this board in five years, there's been a lot of uncertainty with our finances. There's been a lot of questions that I've had. This is an appropriate time for us to move forward with a clear, concise understanding of where we're headed. So when we get information and say, hey, we get 12 opportunities to decide how we give a raise, that's difficult. And that is what I want us to understand. Have a five-year projection, know where we're going. But if we don't know where we're starting, we don't know how we're gonna get there. So I ask, not based on what the past had, but how we move forward with a clear understanding of our financial obligations as well. I've heard in this audit, she said several times that our expenses exceeded our revenue.
Mr. Chairman.
Before, before you go, Ms. Vivins, can I ask you a few questions in regards to this? The forensic accounting that she's asking for, you have an approximate cost on something like that?
I have no idea.
And what would it entail?
Internal auditor, I mean, external auditor, she may be able to tell you that. But she did, because she did ask that she could speak to, to give you some more context on a forensic audit. Is that okay?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
So a forensic audit, and regardless of whether you use a CPA firm or a consulting firm, when you do a forensic audit, you're looking, you're looking for a specific, for a specific thing. For instance, if there was fraud, you might want to have a, well, you want to have a forensic audit to determine how deep that fraud goes. To just do a forensic audit is going to cost you an enormous, we're talking several hundred thousand dollars, because they're looking at every single transaction. And if you're not specifying something specific, we're talking about every single transaction for all of your funds for all of the years. If there's a specific area that you're interested in, that can be accomplished through doing agreed-upon procedures where you tell whoever's doing it for you, where you tell them specifically what it is you're looking for. And they can focus on those specific items. But you really can't do a forensic audit when you don't know what you're looking for.
And when I hear the word forensic, I'm thinking criminal. I'm thinking that something of fraud or something of abuse has occurred and.
That is generally when forensic audits are, that term forensic kind of gets used a lot. It is a deep dive and it's used a lot of times out of context. Because again, like I said, forensic, that means you're looking at every single transaction. And for that, you know, for a number of years, every single transaction of this district, like I said, we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars. And I mean, I don't know how long that would take. You know, it just depends on availability of.
There's a motion on the floor, we're still in discussion.
Mr. Chairman, and if the statement is made that living off of your savings is what every school district does, because if you understand how we're financed, then you would understand when we get money. We get money through QBE at the beginning of the year and we get money at the end of the year when we get taxes. So therefore, it, it's not as if we don't have the money. It's just the way the money is in our account. So you're making it seem like, oh, we need a tan. Every, just about every school district tried to get a tan this year. It was because of legislation. It was because of late tax bills that went out. And, and you're saying you want to go forward, but you're saying, you just sat there and said that you wanted an audit going back three or four years. So how are you moving forward? If you're asking for something that you're not sure, you don't know what the cost, you don't know what you're asking for.
No, I'm clear in what I'm asking for.
If you got a question, then put the question out there if you think it's something wrong instead of making a general statement.
According to Uber, to Robert's rules, and I did it decent and in order. Now, if the board votes it down, that's fine. But I am very familiar with how we receive our revenue. And I'm not comfortable with doing what everybody else is doing. If there's a better way to do it, then we can do it. If there's a need for a tan, that's understandable. I'm saying that we need to get our finances in order. I hear what the auditor is saying. I respect her. She's an expert in what she does. But I'm not using it in a frivolous way. When I say forensic, I mean a deep dive into what it is that we are doing with our money. So I'm, and I understand that it costs money, but we spend money all the time. And so that's why I said I would ask for a RFP. No, I'm not accusing anybody of anything. And so I just want to be clear that when I ask, I have made sure that I understood what I was asking for. Now, if I need to be specific as to what we're looking for, then that's another story. But my, my ask is so we can have a clear understanding of our finances. Now, there's a lot of things that I may not know, but this one I am clear on.
Okay, Mr. Chair. Go ahead, Mr. Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Vivins, you, you've been with us two and a half years, right?
Yes, sir.
So we had 11 findings two and a half years ago, right?
Actually, it was for the '22 audit, I think.
How many findings did we have?
The '22 or '23 audit?
'23 audits. And so over the years that you've been here, the audit have self-corrected itself, am I correct?
We're down to four findings for the '24.
I see no need for a forensic audit because it looks like it's correcting itself. And that's where I stand on that. Thank you.
Okay, discussion is done. We now will take a vote on your motion. Can you repeat your motion again?
I like the motion that we have a forensic audit. I like to move to my motion that we have a forensic audit.
Okay, the motion has been made and properly seconded by Ms. Tellis Cooper. Can I get a vote for the, the, the motion? Okay, can I get a vote opposing the motion? Okay, can I get a vote opposing the motion? You have to count. All right, do you guys have anything else?
Just to say that the rest of the document includes items that are new GASB standards that are coming out in the next couple of years that will affect some of your financial reporting. It's just information only. And then following that, we've got some information just related to some of the services that we offer outside of annual audit. We offer free continuing education that you can get educational credits for. If any of you all are interested in that, if we'll just let Ramona know, we will get your email address and have you added to the list. We very much appreciate the opportunity.
One question before you go, Ms. Baker.
Do you handle the audits for the foundation and the athletic foundation?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Vivins, and thank you to our external auditor for being here tonight. Ms. Vivins, you might as well stay at the podium because you're up next.
So, this evening, we're going to do our monthly financial report. So, the first report is our general fund budget comparison as of 10/31/2025. We have committed 13.1% of our budgeted revenue, with the majority of that being in state revenue. 1.6% of that, or $4 million, is in local taxes, and 13.2% or $2.2 million in other local revenue. On the expenditure side, we've expended, we spent $167 million of our budget, which is 23% of our budget. Any questions on the monthly general fund comparison?
Is there any questions in regards to the monthly? Seeing none, go ahead.
Before we move from there, I just want to let the board know. I know the last meeting you all, over to approve for us to do a TAN.
Yes.
You know, that's based on the cash flow, what we knew at that time. Well, we got $15 million in from the Tax Commissioner's Office for this month. And then last week, we got an additional $13.8 million from, we did grant reimbursements from all of our federal grants, you know, those are all reimbursements. So, that money did come in early, we didn't know that it was going to come in when it did. And in addition to that, while Mr. Harrington was at Gascocks and Georgia Association of School Business Officials Conference in Athens a couple of weeks ago, the State Board of Education is actually releasing our QBE funds earlier. So, for the month of November, they're releasing it this Friday on the 21st. So, that's earlier than the 31st. And then for the month of December, they're actually releasing it on December the 19th. So, because of those early releases and that, and the QBE revenue, not QBE, the tax revenue that we receive greater than what we'd anticipated, and then the influx of the grant reimbursements, we no longer need to do the TAN. So, I'm going to look for it.
So, we're not moving forward with a TAN?
I told them no on Friday.
Good deal. So, the paperwork that we signed is void? And do we have to pay any cost?
No, I told them we weren't paying them anything.
You got it.
No, we don't have to pay them, I told them, because we didn't go through with it. We don't have to pay them anything.
Fantastic. Dr. Haney, you had something? All right, keep going.
We have SLOSS for the month of October, what we received in October. That is what we received in October, it was collected in September, was a little over $6 million. And that is on target, you can see the last two months has been 6.2, 6.3 million. And it's actually a little bit more than what we collected last year during this same time. So, we are on target to meet what we had said we were going to collect in our referendum. So, any questions on this one?
Is there any questions?
I don't have a question. Did I pay my property taxes today?
Good, thank you.
In them school taxes?
I know, right?
It's through the roof.
I know, mild or too.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Purchasing report.
Ms. Marine, that's not nice.
Thank you all for helping us so we don't have this whole anti-TAN.
So, next, I think on the agenda, is it the budget amendments or the?
Purchasing report.
Purchasing is the budget amendments were last, okay. So, next, we have the purchasing report. You have Report A, which is your consumables. Report B are the non-consumables that are greater than $10,000 but less than $100,000. And Report C are the contracts which are greater than $100,000 in these required board approval. And do you have any questions on?
Is there any questions in regards to the purchasing report?
I think.
Wait, Dr. Haney? Go ahead, Dr. Haney.
I was just concerned, I was reading, I just had a question for Ms. Hall in regards to purchasing, about what we need to purchase. How often do we have to keep purchasing these routing systems? Is it because they get upgrades every year? I mean, every time, I think we quoted on this month before, these routing systems. How often are we purchasing?
I'm going to ask Ms. Hall to come and interest that.
She might as well stay up here for me.
The routing software that we currently have is over 10 years old, so it's outdated. And so, for us, we're going with another vendor that's more user-friendly. And we're trying to move in a direction of us doing our enrollment balancing. So, we just got a GIS engineer, and so, it's requiring us to get updated software.
You said the enrollment?
Enrollment balancing.
Thank you.
Ms. Gorey?
All right, Mr. Chair, you might want to stay up here.
Ms. Hall.
Ms. Hall.
Ms. Hall.
I sent an email earlier today asking about the coach buses and the various items that we would purchase. And it just had various amounts. What does that mean? Are we buying things and it's just going to cost us whatever you say it's going to cost?
So, in this case, those are the rules. So, we use charter buses when school buses aren't able to transport the students. And they just put it on the B report. But those are vetted charter services that the students ride on whenever we can't transport.
Okay, so what's the cost?
So, the cost varies based on the vendor. So, they have their own contract, so we had to put it out for bid. We just make sure that they are situated. I don't know what they charge, unfortunately.
So, you want us to vote? I mean, the board of, y'all want us to vote on?
Let me take a crack at this, Ms. Hall, my understanding. You're basically just building a preferred provider list. So, basically, it's just like an HMO where you're not going to all of those doctors, but these are the doctors that you can use.
Right, so if the school wants to use the charter services, we've done our part to vet them. This is the annual renewal for the schools to be able to use those vendors.
And so, the reason why you don't know the cost is because it would take an occurrence in order for you to calculate that cost.
Correct. So, for me, I have nothing to do with that piece of it. I just vet them, I check their insurance, I make sure that they have the state requirements. But once we do that and you guys approve it, then it goes on the website for the schools to be able to use. But each charter company provides something different. And the schools don't go to us when they're using the charter services, they get those services on their home. So, we don't even know that they're utilizing.
And I understand that, but up to what cost? I mean.
Right, there wouldn't be a cost right now.
I understand, there's not a cost until we use it. But, so if we use it 200 days, what's the cost? We use it for 10 days, what's the cost?
That's a great point, but.
You can't expect me to vote on something that I don't know the cost.
I think, I think what happens is, how many providers is it, how many vendors is it? Five of them. So, I think what happens is they vet those five. And what happens is when the school is going on a trip, they go, who has the best price out of the five? Or whatever other attributes they're looking for.
When we're budgeting the item, is it not to exceed a certain amount? What is? So, that means every school in the district could go somewhere every day, and now we're spending a hundred million dollars.
Yeah, what's the restrictions on that, Ms. Hall?
So, the actual payment for those expenses come either from the school account or from the athletic department, if it's an athletic team that's using that service. And again, they don't know what it is until they determine the location that they're going to, how many buses they knew, the number of buses and all of that. And if it exceeds that threshold, then it comes back to the board for approval if it exceeds that threshold. But again, it comes out of the school's accounts, because they're mostly for field trips or special events or whatever. And then for athletics, if it's an athletic.
So, what is the threshold before it come back to the school, seeing we got to pay for it?
So, I don't. Yeah, if it's coming out of the school accounts, Mr. Christmas, it doesn't come before the board because it's coming out of that money that the school generates.
But if they don't have enough money?
They can't take the trip.
Well, I mean, we don't always do that.
So, sometimes, there's a situation where, like, let's say they're going to a championship.
Right.
And so, sometimes, Mr. Townsend may take on the expenditures for it. I can say that when Lovejoy and them went, and I mean not Lovejoy, but Jonesboro went, they had like probably about six buses and it cost about $28,000.
Okay.
So, maybe then, but I think the point he's making is you put it on the report to be approved, but there's no dollar amount. So, maybe you shouldn't have that, maybe that needs to come out of that.
Maybe it should.
I talked to Ms. Watson today in reference to it, and she said she didn't have a choice but to put it on this B report. After your email and I responded, I called her and she said that it had to go on. But I did question it myself.
Well, who is Ms. Watson?
Right there.
No, this is Ms. Brewer. Ms. Watson is the coordinator of purchasing. I think to resolve that, what we could do is not put it on the purchase report and just bring it to the board to approve utilizing those particular vendors to provide transportation.
And it say from school allocated funds?
Yes, from school allocated funds.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir. I think that would be a better way to handle it.
So, when we go through the consent agenda, we'll pull that item.
It's a separate.
Right.
Okay.
Will you, Ms. Vivins, will you have that updated by next meeting?
Yeah, Ms. Brewer, can you make sure that's updated tomorrow?
And Ms. Brewer, can you make sure that you send your corrections to all nine board members? So that, and ask them to repeat, receive when they get it, so that they can make sure that it's done, all right? Thank you.
Any other questions on the purchasing report?
I have a question, but it's for nutrition, but it's not here. I just want to know, Ms. Hamilton, what is the cost for menu items? I mean, because I've had, the reason I'm asking is it might seem a little minor to you all, but it's major to these students who approach me. They even asked me the question, Dr. Haney, can you ask nutrition? How much does it cost to change the menu items that we are receiving every day? Because they specifically said, Dr. Haney, we are tired of eating pizza every day. So, I mean, I just want to know seriously the cost of what it takes to change the menus. How does that process take care of? What is the process?
Good evening. We receive from USDA for lunch approximately $4.71 cents per student in order to produce the meal. And out of that $4.71, we have to buy food, we have to pay labor, and there are other expenses involved with that. So, we try to balance our food cost within the $4.71. So, we try to always run a 40% food cost out of the $4.71. Labor varies because we have to pay not only the salaries, but we also have to pay the benefits. And so, about 45% labor, and then we have other expenses. And that pretty much eats up that whole entire $4.71. So, pizza, yes, it's on the menu every day. However, we have other items that we offer that students can select from. Believe it or not, the pizza is a very popular item. We serve lots of it every day. And we try to do pizza in terms of cheese as well as pepperoni, but we also offer other items on that menu. And anytime you're interested in seeing what we serve, we have that menu listed on the website. So, you can always go look to see what we're serving on a daily basis for breakfast and lunch.
You say it's on the website?
Thank you so much for the clarification of that. And also, Dr. Haney, thank you so much for bringing student concerns to the board meeting. So, you know, I hope that this encourages more students to speak out on the things that you need clarity for or you want change on.
Ms. Chairman, I also had sent that same question to her because my three high schoolers were saying the same thing. But the fact of the matter is, there are other options. They're just not going to the other lines to get the food. So, as she said, pizza's there every day, but they're not doing their due diligence either. Because my granddaughters will complain about the same thing.
Any other questions? Okay, Ms. Vivins, you can move.
Back to your request, Ms. Brewer, so that we can officially do it correct. You said send it to us, but actually, she would need to send it to the superintendent.
Good deal.
And, right.
Unless the superintendent doesn't mind. I'll let you.
I absolutely don't mind her doing it, but I'll do it as well.
All right, thank you. Ms. Vivins, you can move on to the budget amendment.
Yes, sir, I have two budget amendments. One is for our grant funds. So, if you recall during the budget process, we just do an estimate on what we think we might receive for grant funds if we know, have an idea what my carryup might be or whatever. So, at the beginning, part of the approved budget, we approved $5.4 million was approved as part of the federal programs for grants. And this budget amendment is to add the actual amounts that we have been awarded for this fiscal year. So, this is to establish the 2026 budget for grants received from the Georgia Department of Education in the amount of $49,777,288. And I'm not going to go through each one of these, but on the back of, on the last page, that's a summary of these actual grants that we are amending. Any questions on those?
Any questions in regards to the budget amendment? Seeing none?
And the next, the last budget amendment is the one that Dr. Goree referenced earlier. This is to reimburse community engagement department for expenses related to the Teacher of the Year Gala in the amount of $10,952. And that's all I have.
Any questions?
I just have a comment. I just want to thank you, Ms. Vivins, and the finance department for the budget development planning calendar that, thank God. But I still want to see some updates come when you all start doing the budget advisory committee.
Yes, ma'am.
Come first of the year. So, I just still want to see some new development coming from that.
Sure. Okay, yes, sir. I forgot, I'm glad you mentioned that, because I did have one more thing. And that's the approval of the budget calendar that we discussed at the retreat. We just needed approval. We've actually already started the budget process. But you need to get it formally approved.
Okay, where do you have that?
It's number five.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Joseph?
I got a couple hundred questions for him.
Okay, Mr. Ronick, Joseph Smith, I mean, Joseph. I almost called him Mr. Ronick Smith.
That's your son, huh?
That's my son.
I will not comment on that. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Members of the Board, Superintendent Dr. Smith. You have received five executive summaries from the capital project divisions, first being this loss construction update, which provides an update of ongoing projects. The second are two Georgia DOE resolutions. First resolution is to begin the process of the five-year local facility plan. And the second resolution is to add four facilities back to inventory to maximize our state funding opportunities. The next two reports are your capital purchase reports for items below $250,000 and then for items above $250,000. And the last executive summary pertains to the demolition of Fountain Elementary School. The recommendation from the superintendent is that the project be awarded to a complete demolition in the amount of $431,000. Are there any questions about the summaries submitted for your consideration?
Over here?
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Have you, on one of the resolutions, is the language correct? Is it rescind? Or is it rescind as to which one?
It's rescind, R-E-S-C-I-N-D. I have the, we'll have that corrected to you.
You corrected. Look, I didn't look back at it again. Okay, just wanted to make sure our grammar was correct, thank you.
Mr. Joseph?
Sir?
The convocation center?
Sir?
I was with you not long ago, and I'm not sure if you remember, but you said you were going to, we were going to try to do a test run for the December graduation. Is that still on?
Yeah, the graduation is actually in January. So, we've had some preliminary conversation with the TNL side about the possibility of that occurring. It is a tangent question, yes, it's still a possibility. We would like to do a test run before we do the larger graduation. It is a tangent question. Yes, it's still a possibility. We would like to do a test run before we do the larger graduation in May. And so more to come and more consultation or coordination between all departments before we can provide recommendations to the board.
Are we that close where we'll be able to do something like that?
Yes, sir. We are, if you were to drive by I-25, you'll see that the structure is done. We are dried in. And so we are in the finishing stages. If you were to visit the convocation center, you would see that the seats are in. The school side is finished, it's all solved. So the only lagging activity that might be problematic are the low voltage systems that are due to delivery delays are targeting early January. So that's why we're not a definite yes.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Joseph, do the elevators work?
Not at this moment.
That's a problem.
That's a lot of stairs.
Yes, it is.
I'm not making a joke, but they'll be ready and operable by day one.
By day, by?
Monday morning.
Day one, in January.
In January, okay.
In January.
Ms. Baker?
So if you were to visit, you guys will be climbing some steps.
I have a question first. I'm sorry. Forest Park Middle School. I took our former board member Judy Johnson because she actually went to that school and I wanted her to see it. And she, she was impressed. She does want a tour inside when she can get one. But as I was driving around the building, I was seeing fascia that wasn't completed and different stuff. Do we know how long it's going to take to do the punch list that we're going to need to do?
Great question. So as alluded to earlier about material delays, we are, the metal wall panels, one of the deliverables that are lagging behind. So the last shipment of metal panel is right after the holidays. So we're looking to be complete with it by year's end. In terms of the punch list, it hasn't been being formulated yet. So once we get done with the work, we'll come back and create the list and make sure that all punch lists is done before we release the final five percent of the funds.
I think Jesse and I can help you with that punch list.
I have one last question.
Go for it.
I sent an email today and I looked at your, some of the things that you have in process. But I sent you our pictures of the playground at Lake Ridge. And I'd like to know when, have we done anything about that playground equipment? Or will Lake Ridge have to wait another two years? I know we have some money that we could go ahead and fix it like right now. But where are we on that?
I'll have to get an update from the team. I know that we are working with Facility Services in terms of creating a priority list of all the playground needs. They provided us a list of ten elementary school locations. So we've released a team to begin the process of designing the playgrounds, recruiting the playgrounds. And so if you look at our projects to come on our summary sheet, you'll see that the playground replacement is on it.
I saw it, but the problem is with Lake Ridge is they haven't been able to use their playground for the past two years. And we have money that we could go over there when King Elementary School, when somebody went over there and burned it down, we immediately replaced that equipment. And those children should not be suffering when we have money in the bank to go put some playground equipment over there like right now.
Understood. Understood. We'll refer to that.
Yeah, we'll get on it.
What did you say?
We'll get on it.
You're gonna get on it?
Yes, sir.
What does that mean? That mean we're gonna get, we're gonna take care of it? That's what that means.
I want to thank Mr. Joseph. I had the opportunity to spend three days with him over in Charlotte, North Carolina, last week at a capital improvements conference offered by AASA. And everybody there from Georgia and all the states across the country were lauding his leadership in the capital improvements world, and he is the man. So I knew he was good, but until you get in that world and hear all the folks complimenting him, it really hits home. And as Ms. Heel always talks about, a portrait of a graduate we have probably defined as Capitol Improvement Officer in Public Education.
Thank you, thank you.
Continue adopting him.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Smith. But when are we gonna get on it?
We're already on it. As the request has been made.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Joseph. Ms. Albritton?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, other members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Smith, colleagues and community members. The Personnel Changes Report summarizes all personnel actions for the period of October 11th through November 3rd, 2025. Human resources updates were submitted to the Board of Education for your review. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Dr. Haney?
As I mentioned before, what are we, what are we doing to specifically as a recruitment? Doing to get some hiring for these vacancies in special education?
So for special education vacancies, we employ several strategies to mitigate that area. Some of those we handle singularly through the Human Resources Division and some of which we partner with Student Services. Just a couple of them that come top of mind are direct reach out to education programs that offer special education as a focus. We have our Grow Your Own initiatives. We serve as a host for students who are matriculating through special education programs. We teach them the Clayton Way and court them to join us for their first professional opportunity. I will like to point out, as you stated, we have twenty-eight vacancies now. At about this time, last year we were at eighteen. But as Ms. Smith has shared with us previously, we do have more students enrolled in special education requiring those services, which has afforded the district an opportunity to add additional teaching opportunities. We did start May 27th of this year, there were fifty-seven vacancies. So I'm sharing that to show that the team, HR, Student Services and our school leaders are being very diligent in hiring teachers in that area.
Are you still doing job fairs?
Yes. So we're still participating in job fairs, particularly at universities. It's that season now. And then we'll ramp up with our district hosted job fairs in March.
Any questions on this side? Seeing none, thank you very much, Ms. Albritton.
Thank you, Ms. Albritton.
All right, all right, board. We're on our second read of Policy Series A and we will be voting on that policy December 1st, at the December 1st board meeting. Is there any discussion that's needed for Policy Series A? Seeing none. Next is Policy Series B. That's also a second read and we will be voting on that policy December 1st. Is there any questions or discussion in regards to that? We now move on to Policy Series C. That's also a second read and we will be voting on that policy also on December 1st. Is there any discussion or questions in regards to Policy Series C? Next we have Policy Series J, C, D, A, F. This is our first read, but we will be voting on this policy come December 1st. All right, so make sure that you read through that policy and if there's any questions or clarity that you need, please get that email over to Dr. Smith so that he can get it to the appropriate people. Is there any questions?
Just for everyone to know that we did discuss this on three-on-three meetings. So it's not that we haven't seen it at all and I just want the public to be aware of that.
All right. Well, now moving on to the business agenda, the items that are under here are for tonight. So we'll be voting on these items this evening. The first one is the tentative 2026 Board Meeting Calendar. That's not the calendar for the entire district. It's the calendar for our board meetings going into 2026. Is there any questions or discussions that we need in regards to the tentative 2026 Board Meeting Calendar? Seeing none, can I get a motion? Ms. Tellis Cooper? Ms. Baker? All right, the motion has been made by Ms. Joy Tellis Cooper and seconded by Ms. Baker. Can I get a vote on the tentative 2026 Board Meeting Calendar? It's unanimous. We also have the international travel approval. Is there any questions or discussion in regards to the international travel approval? All right, seeing none, can I get a motion? Ms. Baker?
I'm okay. We accept the international travel budget or program.
Okay, I seen Ms. Tellis Cooper's hands first. Okay, the motion has been made by Ms. Mary Baker and seconded by Ms. Joyce Tellis Cooper. You have, okay, let's vote. All right, and the last item on the list is the approval of the proposed board meeting agenda for December 1st, 2025. Could I get a motion?
So.
Ms. Hill?
I have a discussion.
Go ahead.
Discussion.
Yes. Can we, can we move, take one item off of that since we've had quite a discussion prior this evening? Can we take item E out of the business agenda?
Item E? Okay, okay. So we're gonna take that off and, and it, I thought she was gonna redo it and then submit it back.
Well, we just had a discussion.
Right.
And we don't, we got a lot of questions.
Okay, in regards to, in regards to the box?
Isn't it?
Right, she was gonna make the adjustment and then have it ready and emailed to everyone for us to review it and have it prepared for December 1st. Do you want to just pull it and?
Can we just pull it and, because I thought we were talking about trying to meet to have a discussion.
I mean, Ms. Goree, what do you, I'm sorry, I'm not following. What item are you talking about?
The business agenda. Am I not looking at for the lease foundation?
No, that's, oh, you mean take that off for December 1st? Okay.
Take it off the purchase report?
No, no, off the agenda for next. So you want that removed for the next, for December 1st? Can we leave that on there and take it off on the day of, just in case it's reviewed and, all right? So we'll leave it as it is now and we'll poll everybody on December 1st to see if we go forward with, if it's even, if it's even ready.
Right.
Okay?
That's the only reason why I was saying it because I didn't know if it would be ready.
Right, I got you. Right, most likely it won't, but you know, if we get, go for it. Right. Oh, so you're saying to add to the agenda? Okay. All right. Right, all right, well, so we'll, we'll, we'll add that to the agenda. Dr. Smith, the foundation under the. See, because it's not scheduled to discuss on December 1st. That's just a board meeting. But you want it. All right, so let me, let me poll the board. Do you want the foundation report on the, on the December 1st meeting? Or do you want to wait for it on the January 12th?
I would like to give the foundation members an opportunity to have ample time to prepare so we can have a deep dive conversation.
And, and to be.
And I don't want them to have to be, time to do all of that work over the break and then come back right after it. So I thought we perhaps would do it a little further into December in a structured environment.
Right. And also, this is just me, my opinion, one board member. I would love for that, that agreement to at least be in draft format to you, marked up before we actually have them here to discuss those matters that we're gonna, we're gonna be going back and forth on. So that's why I would love to have them on for January, January 12th work session.
So to, and, and to make it clear for me, if you just want to have it down for information, to have a conversation instead of the vote, that will, I guess, will suffice. So give them time to work on it, but we can discuss the working body project that they have until we, until we come to a full.
And you're saying that for December 1st?
Yes, just for information.
Ms. Goree, this, this, December 1st, you want it on that to adjust the agenda so that they can give a presentation?
I don't think they will be ready December 1st as.
Well, we're trying to coordinate two organizations, the foundation and the operators, and I don't know what their schedule looks like at this point.
Right, I mean, we got it.
So take it off.
I just will provide. When are you gonna take it off this time? It is only, it's only the. They're trying to add a foundation presentation. The lease is not going to be discussed. The lease will be discussed on December 1st. They're talking about a presentation, just a general presentation on the updates and status of the foundation on December 1st during our board meeting, which we typically don't have presentations on.
Right, boy, right, right.
So I think with Dr. Smith saying it, please correct me, Dr. Smith. Dr. Smith is saying wait until the work session.
That's fine. I thought it was talking about the lease.
Okay, so what's your answer? Do you want it on?
If it's got the lease written on it, I mean, favorably.
And Ms. Goree, you said, hold up?
Yes.
All right.
I don't, I don't really agree with Dr. Smith. The problem is saying, can possibly do this? I put a fire on it. And if they can't, honestly, they can't, that's the way it goes. But we're supposed to be pulling this thing up for a boost in January.
Good deal. Exactly. Give them time. So you know, one, two, three, let's give them time. One, two. Now, we want it now. Claire, can we add that on December 1st? So we're gonna have a discussion with the foundation. If they're ready, then we'll add that agenda item to the, to the agenda on December 1st, if they're ready. Right, if the board approves on December 1st. But they'll be ready if the board, if the board does approve. Yes, ma'am?
Or he or we, it doesn't have to be an end date like what you're trying to do for January, Dr. Smith. We just want an update from the board and the operator telling us what's going on. So that should, it should take a preparation and not what you're talking about in January.
I'm not advocating in January. I'm just saying, I don't want them to have to continue this over Thanksgiving holidays and come right in with it. I'm saying let's get into December, oh, winter too. And then hopefully their schedules will accommodate.
I understand what you're saying, but you're not asking like for the end date like what you wanted. I know what you're wanting. You just didn't hear, which they should know that right off the hook. What's going on, the updates, they didn't come back later on in the winter and you left that end date that you want them to see it to be.
I'm sure that the pleasure of the board, so that's throughout which I'll see if they.
They're going to start getting monthly updates since the convocation center opening up so close. We are, we are, and we really have to add other vacations as, like, maybe a month or half of them. That's about it. So because getting so close to it, it seems like we need to have more updates. And to also let the community know, it's always good to let them know what's going on, I'm saying, and how.
I'm bored. I was just trying to be specific to, to, to people trying to celebrate with their families and give a cushion.
And I was just going based off of my knowledge of being here that I don't think that they're gonna give you any updates that are going to sway you either which way. And I don't think they, I don't think that they're prepared to have that conversation. If you ask me what's happening right now, two things, and that's the only two things they're focused on. They're trying to get this lease though, which has been submitted to everybody and is now back in the other turn his hands, waiting for that to come back. That's one. And then two is the agreement that is being worked on probably for the next two weeks. So those are the only two things that I see that they can come here and talk about. But it's three and three. I'm the board chair, so what I'm gonna do is make sure they're ready to give those presentations.
Um, I, I, I'm the board chair, so what I'm gonna do is make sure they're ready to give those presentations, um, on December 1st. But we will vote on what is to add on December 1st, all right? All right, so with that being said, the time currently is? Yes, yes, no, we didn't vote, I'm sorry, on the, so we're, we're, there are no changes being done to the proposed, um, board meeting agenda for December 1st at this moment. But on December 1st, we'll make the decision as a whole to whether we want to add that foundation. But as of now, this vote is to keep the agenda as it is right now. Can I get a motion for that? Ms. Baker? Ms. Tellis? Ms. Tellis Cooper? I got Ms. Baker making the motion, I got Tellis Cooper seconding it. Can I get a vote? Okay, that completes our agenda for this evening. Let me just check it by vice chair here, am I done? I'm done at 7:51, it's the evening's agenda.